All right, eight, six o'clock. We'll call the Tuesday City Council meeting order. And y'all rise and join me in the 11:00.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to welcome to our first six o'clock meeting. If one would like to leave in a better attendance, may you have any indication of six o'clock work? We'll find out, I guess. Anyway, I'm switching the agenda for everyone's notification. I'm going to move the action items above the presentations. I'm extending the note that it's going to be virtual along with Sarah Stevens, and Carmen will not be attending this evening. But for some of our attendees on the action items, we're going to go first. So the first action item is appointments to Coos Bay Northern Waterport. And we have a ballot in front of us. Oh, I just compared everything. All right, I apologize. Public comment still comes first. So this would be time to come forth and make a comment, preferably on something that's not on the agenda. But if that's still want to mention it, then we probably would not address you at that time. So any comment, public comment? James, you're going to jump up and so is Beth.
I'm going to pass. Oops, sorry.
All right.
My name is Beth Clarkson, and I am here representing my business, Terrible Sports and Yes, and You Think. And I'm not here to complain to the city about your recent debacle. I don't recall a debacle. We had a road construction problem with the sewer, and we had to make some adjustments with the road, which caused some congestion and people having a hard time getting into the big boat. If you were coming from the north, you had to drive all the way down to the visitor center, turn around in the parking lot of the visitor center to come all the way back up to make a turn to get into the village. And if you didn't know that, or you just didn't want to take the time to do that, you didn't come in. I estimate I lost about 25% of my walking traffic for Valentine's Day. Like I said, I'm not here to blame the city. I went down the channel, or up the channel, I should say. Talked to Night River. I talked to the city. I talked to Jim Hostly. I ended up talking with Greg. And everybody was really nice about it and compassionate about my problem. But there seemed to be no solution as to this was just how it was. So what I'm asking the city is if I wish you never had this problem again.
Please do.
But if that problem happens again, I don't know. I understand we have to go to ODOT and have them make a change. I did not see why they couldn't remain. They stopped all the traffic to let cross traffic go. It seemed like it would be natural to let turn traffic go at that time as well. And like I said, I know it's not the city's problem. It was an ODOT solution. But I'm hoping that the city can at least talk to ODOT about a new plan. This is a plan that they have, that they just have when this happens, or this was, you know, a hurry-up plan. I don't know what that, how it transpired, how the traffic was. But just that consideration would have been a little bit nicer. So that's my only, I guess I'm not here to complain. I'm just here to hope that we can make a better solution if this ever was happening again.
Okay, so is there something that we can re- send a letter to ODOT and say next time, you know, hopefully it's planned next time?
They were certainly advised that it's urgent for the versions as we leave it other concerns.
Okay, so we did get the information.
Fortunately, this does not happen very often. This is the only time I remember in my 32 years with the city that this has happened when it wasn't a great. It's fairly rare, but ODOT does control this. It's their highway. In my understanding, they made these decisions based off advice from traffic engineers, mostly out of safety for the mother.
Well, no, it didn't make sense. I understand what you're saying, because if they had flaggers, it all four stops there. And I understand, you're right.
And it wasn't just my business that was impacted. Up and down the road was impacted. But it just seemed like an easy fix that couldn't be fixed. So that, like I said, I hear no blame. But hopefully, maybe we can work towards a better resolve for that.
Sure, I agree. I mean, I was down there daily. I'd walk and everything.
Well, especially when it took a week. And it started out, it was just going to be weekend. And then it was a week. And then I thought, well, I guess it's the next Monday. You know, so it just kept getting worse.
No, I think it can be better. Unfortunately, you're right. We can make it better.
Like I said, I don't wish that accent to happen either.
Neither, none of us do.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Beth. James, you're next. Any other public comments? How's it going?
Hey, it's going good, thank you. Scott Fraser, Cypress Point, Coos Bay. Part of the action items is about the server upgrade. I'm not here to talk about that. But it just seems to have good segue into what I was going to say. I've been in Eastside for about 40 years now. And my wife and I walk all the time down there. The boat rings, kind of a problem. There's a lot of graffiti going on down there. We've had people in the middle of the night, especially in the summer, going out, doing cookies in the parking lot. There's just a lot of traffic, you know, and it's not fishing season. And just different things going on. I wondered if the city could put a couple of cameras up there.
Public comment, did it catch that?
Great question, yes, and good memory. So we were asked by the Eastside and the Washington Center for a gate up there that would be shut in the evening times and open in the early morning hours would allow fishermen to be there. Staff is already in progress hitting votes for that. And who wants to install, we're going to contract out with the same organization that opens a very similar gate at Thomas Park.
So we have the security from the center. So yes, that's in the works. I'm surprised it's not down there. It's in, so it'll be there. We won't be able to get in there.
That would be my next suggestion. I also talked to Dr. Vern Decker, Officer Lindell before the meeting, and questioned him about the cameras at the skate park. And he said they've been down for two months, same opening as part of it.
There's gate?
Yeah, okay. It'd be great if the server, that was part of the server program.
I'm not sure whether or not it be a vote. I don't know if you're going to take case on that, but...
I'm not certain about that. So we can certainly have a conversation with that and vote.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kristin.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I want to say thank you guys, because I'm sure you all are having a hard session about the problem, about the alley issue. And y'all have already grappled a little bit on the loopholes and fair brush. Just one second, I need to system.
So I don't know if we can do much more on that. Roger and I have talked. And, you know, are you willing to financially participate in anything?
I'm definitely considering, for sure.
Okay. I mean, that's the only other way I think that anything else can be done. And so it might be, that might be an option.
Yeah. One second, I need to wait.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. Hearing the public comments, now we will go to the first action item, appointment to Coos Bay Northern Waterport. We have ballots in front of us. Stephanie on voting.
I wanted to declare a potential conflict of interest or at least a concern.
Yeah, it's not a conflict, I believe. But we have made here to go ahead and explain the process.
Well, once you explain the conflict...
I was just going to say, the conflict is that I am married to one of the candidates.
That's not a true legal conflict in the sense that you don't have any financial gain or your family doesn't grow business, so you don't have financial gain. I understand the concern. But under our local rules, council rules, you still have the right to go ahead and vote.
So what we can do, and Roger can kind of correct me here, the council can suspend the rules and allow Stephanie not to vote.
If the council, yeah, if the council approves that by majority vote.
I thought that'd be unanimous. Majority?
There's two methods here for the council rules. One, the council may be, by consensus, allow a member not to vote. Your other option is suspend the council rule, which would require a majority vote.
So by consensus, let's start with consensus. By consensus, do we agree that Stephanie should not vote for the perception of conflict? Agree? Lucinda and Sarah?
Agreed.
Did I answer? Okay, all right, it's consensus, all right. So there were, Stephanie will not vote. And there's ballots in front, and you need to fill out the ballot. And then which way is this going? Melissa's over there. And then Lucinda will text, I think. And Sarah, how would you like to vote? You can text Roger. Okay, yeah.
Robert Kilmer has been appointed to the Coos Bay Northern Waterport.
All right, thank you. Rob Kilmer has been appointed to the waterport position. There's two that apply.
First, thank you very much. So I would point out that Dr. Sharp's appointment will continue until March, through the end of March.
All right. Next action item is semi, no, excuse me, approval of brain injury representation. How does it do the proclamation? Who can go back? I don't know if she will.
Thank you very much for supporting us and bringing us further forward. I didn't say to them. Proclamation. Whereas more than 14,000 Oregonians are currently living with long-term effects of a brain injury. And whereas falls are the leading cause of brain-related injuries in Oregon. They can also be the result of childhood trauma, motor vehicle crashes, assault, sports-related injuries, occupational-related injuries, war-related injuries, drug use, or opioid overdoses. And whereas Oregon has at least 1.3 million active military personnel and more than 259,000 veterans residing in the state. Whereas an estimated 1.6 to 3.8 million sports and recreational mild traumatic brain injuries, often called concussions, occur in the United States per year during competitive sports and recreational activities. And traumatic brain injury has been the signature injury of war, presenting new challenges for members of the military and their families in the state. And whereas 30% of sports-related injuries happen among youth five to 19 years of age. And because the signs of brain injury are not always well-recognized, youth may put themselves at risk for another injury in potentially fatal second impact syndrome. And whereas there's a large number of mild and moderate traumatic brain injuries that go undiagnosed or untreated. And whereas early and adequate intervention, especially cognitive rehabilitation, will greatly increase quality of life and enable individuals with brain injury to return to home, school, work, and their communities. And whereas March has been designated as National Brain Injury Awareness Month to promote awareness of the extent, consequences, causes, treatments, and prevention of acquired brain injuries. And whereas the Brain Injury Association of America and Brain Injury Association, actually, it's the Brain Injury Alliance of Oregon, are dedicated to raising awareness of brain injuries. Now, therefore...
Hi, Joe Benetti, Mayor of the City of Coos Bay, and behalf of the City Council, do hereby claim the month of March 2023 as Brain Injury Awareness Month. The City of Coos Bay, in command, the opposite events, opposite sayance to all citizens.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing this before us, and it's much appreciated.
Really good answer.
Okay, so council, I need a motion and a second to approve this, please.
So moved.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Brain Injury Awareness Month confirmation. Any discussion or comments? Hearing them, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. All right, we're jumping around tonight, and I apologize. Anyway, I'm kind of new to this, so I'm not wrong. Number three is consent calendar. Council, how would you like to proceed?
I'm openly approve consent calendar.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve consent calendar submitted. Is there any other comments? Hearing them, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing regarding the housing needs analysis. Jim, Carolyn, or Sheila?
I am, can you hear me?
Okay. So, yes, go ahead. So you're going to make a presentation for it before I open up the public hearing?
Yes, I do. I will. I have a few remarks, and I'm going to hand off to Jake Kellister. I'll comment. You're looking tonight in your public hearing at information on the draft of 2022 House of Houseview related comprehensive planning limits and preliminary urban growth boundary expansion memo work products. That is all laid out and is down recorded before you. It was available as of last Friday. The project presentation that Jake has shared, all key project features, public testimony comments received to date, and that will be contained within a power ball. The project is for grant funded by Oregon Land Conservation Development Department and specified by its completion of draft work on these work products to be submitted by May 31, 2023. And with that, I will hand off to Jake Kellister for a power ball presentation, and he'll be driving now.
Thanks, Carolyn. I get confirmation of that initial screen? Okay, we see the full screen now? Good evening, everyone. Counselor, appreciate the opportunity once again on the board. Appreciate the opportunity and want to hand over to have your attention and time to review a dedicated work session to go revisit the 2022, who wrote 2020 conference analysis. What we're going to do today, because we had that work session, we'll just touch on high-level, still to confirm sort of the content here. It's great conversation, the work session, and a lot of perspectives shared. And so just want to really, for the sake of the public hearing, provide an overview of some key things here. So I'm going to give a little process context. I'm going to look at the amendments that are proposed. And the housing needs analysis that is, or just changes, et cetera. And then talk about the HDB expansion that we're going to have in the city of Paterson. So the Housing Advisory Committee was established to help guide the housing needs analysis. That group met on a number of occasions in the spring of 2022. Planning Commission had a work session in August to review the draft. City Council public session in August as well. Shortly after that, Planning Commission had a follow-up public hearing in September and also in January of this year. And the City Council had a work session in January 2023. A lot of things happened in between. But those were sort of the key decision makers that the committee touched on, scored the list of projects and some data. So key housing needs analysis amendments. Really looking at these comparisons in 2020. Housing needs analysis, there were changes in data. There was a census in 2020. Or rather, the 2020 census did change. Of course, it found out a couple of years after 2020. It was a process, and it did was part of that. And there were also different circumstances that had evolved. So some changes to some key housing developments that were incorporated to the 2020 analysis. Twenty-two building lands in the 2020, which was set on land that's available over time. It identified 400 acres of acres of land as a control land and 79 acres of need for housing. And that's 2022. The housing limitations and impact due to natural hazards were less than the 2020 HNA and the 2022 HNA. So the 2022 HNA staff leaned quite a bit more into natural hazards. Looking at a few other datasets added, proposing to add some other natural hazards which were left out of the Coos Bay planning plan to account for things like local fashion, to strengthen sign language, and deliver things like plant slides and slope. The product of that was greatly reducing the amount of built-up lands from 400 acres down to 79 available acres. And then a need of 45 acres to accommodate residential development over the next 20 years. The 2022 HNA highlighted greater multi-family housing as a direct response to affordability dynamics and merged the number of analysis that the HNA connects price points, the housing stock essentially, and says, well, do you have housing beneath this level? The 2020 HNA really did, we thought, was insufficient job working out that, that, or, so, that really favors the number of multi-family housing units. So that type, with the first table, to summarize what the needed types are. Those are the number of multi-family housing units in 2022. While the materials that you have, the figures tonight, have a few other manifestations to sort of keep. And then it's, for, you know, updates that we like. Some of the public comments that we heard over that period of time was concerned initially about vacancy rates, seat-wise. That was a concern for us and having heard in the thing. Sense about that, essentially, market rate vacancy rates are not as applicable as a straight vacancy rate in the community when you're doing housing needs analysis. Something's not being used to house as an occupied unit. You don't want to include that as part of your strategy for housing for future residents. So really wanting to use solid housing stock to accommodate and to show the future housing. State is pursuing a new methodology for establishing housing. This is something that's very early in its development. But some of the messages we heard was that the community should wait. If there's something new coming down from the state then it should pause and wait. Any comments about our inquiry deals to be about how we should proceed here in the most related to that? There was, despite that, to address more concerns, there was something about whether the plan, whether the strategy, speaking analysis, is looking sufficiently at environmental constraints. And in particular, we'll make a little more aggressively at likely regulatory changes and likely things that might have developed to the rules and policies related to natural hazards. Again, we'll speak to this. We leaned in pretty far. We saw that in the early 48 down to 28, essentially. We really felt like that was something that we would push quite far on to address. And so we did see a staff ways to lean into that. There's something certain about build-up lands and trying to create a good market condition to trend sufficiently. These analyses are things that can endlessly pursue and investigate. And so we saw the LCD paying for the work, the network to ultimately acknowledge the work we acquired to see, you know, how hard it is, do you think we need to lean into this? And their response was essentially, they thought that the HNA was well-thought analysis and that the LCD not really the necessary factual basis. So it uses to make HNA feel such a super speculative for real possible changes to financial or insurance regulations. So given the scope of our work and the ability to continue that research, we considered that to be adequate. One of the really key points of feedback was some concern about how our HDB expansion memo will describe, the memo has failed to act with accounting for nuances around the county's unique urban growth areas. I think the best way to characterize it is that Coos Bay has a pretty problematic boundary, foundation, let's say. So the documentation, the history, the nuance, and it creates a bit of a challenge in getting a solid foundation to take next steps, next steps, to, like, let's talk about expanding urban GDB. Let's talk about techniques to urban growth management. Kind of calls into question all those assumptions and policies related to that, because it's just outstanding questions. That's not something that our project was stoked to undertake at that scale. And pretty quickly, we determined that the urban growth management policies, questions around that really need to be tabled. The Planning Commission, in fact, provided recommendations to council. But they addressed that sometime in years ago. It sounds like it's something that's been sort of hunted for some time and something that really needs to be coordinated and resolved between the county and the city and perhaps other parties. But anything, even the materials going forward, and all identified here going forward that are related to urban management appear to be sort of problematic in making definitive decisions about right now. So the HNA itself, we were focused. We provided comments, thoroughly looked up the document. We took quite a few of those comments into consideration. We changed from demand to needs throughout the document. We added some trend clarification language around that and made a few other rewarding suggestions. The comprehensive plan narrative requirements. These are changes to the narrative qualities around the natural hazards. These, if you went through the main, they were restriction. They're going to do, essentially, from take one end of the land or cut that, or back it. And so the proposal is to add some narrative initiatives using the natural head concepts, the fashion, landslide. Housing sections, the section is essentially updated. So there's narrative there that gets updated in the content and then if any gets adopted or updated. And then this section, urban growth management, the big start next to this and kind of several guns throughout, you kind of had a good start. These are the urban growth management, all these are pieces that are kind of on the shake ground. And you see the promotions that emerged that these essentially called out in one scenario. I think that shouldn't be advanced, just because of that document. So some natural housing policies have been controlled. I think these are the elements that we think as staff are intact, are important. They really, the dial on local lands, they're an important step for any housing needs analysis, any future growth expansion to be based on. Essentially provides a policy foundation to write development code. So now I want more specific to the scenario. So another one more specific to the economy, there's a housing policy that looks at, it's essentially a counterpart to policy 2.4, which says that the city should investigate the expansion of the city's urban growth family, to that address it for the fall industrial lines, this can be a counterpart for the city, but could be argued this is tied to our urban concept of, again, more language that's tied to the urban growth management elements, section 79 of the comprehensive plan is really the particular spirit of this stuff, so anything which related to 79, something to be mindful of, how motions, or at least the planning commission recommendation, can be added. More language related to the growth management. Then the UGB expansion now, the memo itself was intended to be, the city was going to conduct this analysis, the concept was, there should be some areas, what that means, what exactly, what's the impact it will have on this. Analysis specifically for UGB expansion, lots of communities utilize that housing needs analysis as a mechanism, it can, the building of lands and some others, and other analyses to justify expansion. And so in this instance, that wasn't necessarily a purpose, it was about addressing both in the housing role, but it is an analysis that hasn't conducted, it should be reviewed for its impact. And so it really was an intent, the intent was to educate about UGB expansion rules, to place in the Kuzbay context, say, given Kuzbay's dynamics, here's what these analyses suggest about it specifically, and a lot of those are luxury, so it wasn't intended to be urban, urban boundary expansion analysis, to give a sort of bird's eye view of this sort of concept and the landscape, and really opened up a sort of can of learning related to that's its history on the city's UGB. So the next steps that are related to the UGB expansion, we just run planning, and this is right out of the lands in the 4, you determine land supply, and so have urban land in the 4. You determined that the UGB expansion is necessary to justify, so that's a conclusion that emerges from the HNA here. That's kind of how HNA contributes to this, and then how these other processes that should undertake to establish a study here, add land to UGB, and to do the planning zone for that land. So that memo just outlines those steps. So what emerged from this process is a couple of options for council, obviously, you'll see the third option, which is what you'd like to do, but here are the alternatives that have actually this far. So council can move to adopt a resolution except for draft project in its entirety, for compliance with the DLC agreement. Council can follow the recommendation by the planning commission, planning commission moved to adopt the housing needs analysis application, except for amendments to section 79, this is the urban management sections, and adopt ordinance, adopt by ordinance the comprehensive plan amendments, and related to draft implementation, suppose that not section 79, right, growth sanction. Then rather than adopting, except for draft, over there, the urban development expansion memo, it's been permissioned on an advisory, prefer the evaluation, with a decision on each by January 10th, or so, maybe going in this timeframe, the planning commission bought the city, which are tied some recognition for this question. Pursuing this would be a continuance from our seventh, just in order to compare the ordinances necessary for that. And then of course, the third option is really a nutshell, the council can and should do what they feel is right, which would be a combination with certain elements of the other options. They could move to the seventh, and ask staff to proceed with certain adjustments, and then direct us to bring something to the seventh, and have that in place, prepare for hopefully some further action. So that's staff's participation as an overview of where we're at with the housing needs analysis, and look forward to council's deliberation and the public's thoughts.
All right, thanks Jacob, anything else Carolyn before I open the public hearing? Do you have council any questions, or Jacob, or Carolyn, before I open the public hearing? All right, so now for the public hearing regarding the housing needs analysis, we've got a short version, believe it or not, of what's been going on, we have quite a bit of context here. This would take you to the planning commission, came to the council, referred back to the planning commission, so we've gone through this a few times, and we're back here again, hopefully to come up with a conclusion out of the four. Anyway, that being said, anyone like to come forth and make a comment? All right, hearing that, we will close without any comments. And council, who wants to go first to address this, or talk about it, or like and do it, or however you want to go?
Yeah, I'll start with my bit. I think other areas that will be covered, I only, well, my primary issue with the outcome, it's not with the creators of the report, it's just a model that's in common use, and that's what's used for the needs analysis, is to determine if you have adequate amounts of land, you also have to assume the density of what will be constructed. The way that's accomplished, as I recall from the 304, what I'm looking at, is they use what's called a de-alimented housing model. The way that functions is, it's a model for predicting not only housing needs, but housing developments in terms of density, and it's, the function of it, which can work good in areas that are of more common geography, is that it dissociates the local factors from the predictions of housing development, and the intent there is to follow kind of what the market is doing as it progresses, not the historical development of a region. And that can work in areas that have comparable cities. For Kuzbay's sake, there are no cities of comparable size on the coast of Oregon. So if you use that model, you're going to be predicting densities that are based on cities that have flat buildable land, and we don't have the same land to develop that density of housing. But again, in the de-alimented model, they remove all local factors so that they can use the averages of other cities of similar size, and it makes sense in some ways, but for our safety purposes, it doesn't. The other cities that are life that have most have a river nearby, otherwise, it's places like Pendleton, it's fairly flat, Dallas, Oregon, fairly flat. So that in itself will impact whether, how much space we need, by the virtue of the comparables being substantially different in their ability to develop density.
So, hey, that's what Jeff did, he just wanted me to go forward. All right, so there's been a presentation on how we can adopt and accept these things, but I also know that we can also do the one where we accept the hearing ready analysis report, we don't have to do anything else, that's it. I'm not saying this report doesn't have some good data, and it does, and it can be used. In fact, the city manager has already used some of the data in, this analysis has some good data, but when this first came to us, and we were all shocked, because we said there was enough buildable lands in this area, and the housing needs analysis, I was taken back, we all were, and so we pushed back, and then went back to the planning commission. Since that time, this report has been adjusted because of more information, information from Al Johnson, Bill Dryal, Crystal Soji. Al Johnson's data in here, if you haven't had a chance, I really think you need to go through and read it, it's, I mean, I commend him, he was a Miami U.S. attorney, there was many pages in time that went into this, if we'd have gotten this information, it would cost us thousands, and it was addressed by Elkhaw, but I still don't think it was thorough enough, I still think it's incomplete, I think there's more information that can be gleaned from this, so I think we should just accept this hearing and this report, but not do anything else. As far as UGB goes, I really don't agree with the synopsis and projection that they're going, if nothing, we can just acknowledge it and do nothing more. I believe that we, and the county planner, Jill Roffey, and I think Chelsea, and maybe if we can get a couple volunteers to go and talk about how we can change this, and this can be changed by taking UGB and adapting it into an urban growth area, and we don't need to go through all that as we begin with, I think those are the first steps we take, then we start addressing the rest of it. And this has been addressed and accepted and agreed upon by Jill Roffey, the county planner, and I think we have our city planner, and those two can start working this out. This is going to take some time, but we got to get the county to buy into it, and then the city has to agree to it, and then we can move forward. So I think that's how we move on that process. So with that being said, I think the current draft building lands analysis, housing needs is a good working document, but there's still a lot of work to be done, and there's already been changes from the first time, as I already mentioned. I know it's better than the other one, 2020, but I think we're still premature in adopting this, and we can go through some different instances and scenarios, also the legislature could possibly change some things, it could change how we look at things and how we adopt things, I know that that's been addressed also by Elkhaw, but I still think there's a possibility of unknowns out there that we don't know, and then we can go ahead and finalize this plan if we want to, but we can use it, I just don't think we need to adopt it.
What gets us to the point where we're, maybe the criteria of the grant?
You actually have meant criteria of the grant by holding this meeting and having the information presented to you, I do agree that you should accept it at that stage. We did here at the housing summit, the most recent housing summit from DLCD staff, that there are potential changes coming from the legislature in the HNA process. As to the fact that, let's say you don't adopt it, the fact is that we're using the 2020 HNA, and our current housing production strategy, which is underway, is based on the 2020 document. The mayor's correct, I know, use and shared information from the 2022 document, which not only shows that there is a current housing shortage, probably 450 some homes, but we have additional projected shortage, more around the same number in the next 20 years, but it also states that there's a 77% of the projected housing needs to be in multi-family, which is part of the basis and the argument for the multi-unit property tax exemption program.
Yeah, so we're going to be bringing that up for discussion, and also, if I understand correctly, the 2020 housing needs analysis, and we went ahead on 2022, it normally is a year span before we do another plan, this was brought up, carefully decided that this needed to be addressed, because we're looking at this 450 unit complex that went from modular homes to stick homes. Well, now that has, at this point, is still in the process of being designed, and so I think, again, we don't know where that's at. So I think there's some variables, unknowns, and I think we're premature, we adopt this, accepting it would be fine, or, but that's all I think we should do is accept it, or accept the hearing ready analysis and report, either way, I think it accomplishes the same thing.
Isn't option one, accepting it, so isn't there? Move to adopt resolution, accepting the draft project for compliance?
I don't think we need to do any of that.
We're adopting the resolution. Mayor, you asked the question of the representative from DLCD, and what we're concerned is, it could certainly not be obligations of the grant, and as our understanding, it could be hearing ready, and to my judgment, the fact that we can have this hearing tonight makes us not be obligations of the grant. And so I am, I think, I apologize, Carolyn, the staff, for all the work they've done, I just think that there are so many things that could potentially change over this next year or two, that I am accepting that it's hearing ready, but not adopting it.
This is Carolyn, would you want to take a look at, more towards the end of the resolution, and maybe Nicole could weigh in here on the identification of the intent? That was the intent of the resolution, was that you were just accepting it for purposes of the grant, you were not adopting the actions that it had indicated could be done?
That you guys read the resolution, because I agree, Carolyn, pretty much says we're just accepting it to meet the requirement.
We could, but I mean, we could, I guess, but I understand, I mean, we could accept the resolution, I mean, we can just make it more gentle, I mean, if that's going to make things better, but it doesn't change the fact that we're just accepting this as a document for information, we're not doing anything else.
That would be correct, mayor, however, when we wrap up the grant and send this off to the DLC, I need to have something to show them, that, you know, and instrument, some kind of show them that you've had this conversation, you've come to this conclusion, if you prefer not to do a resolution, you could do amended action, I think the resolution is written, ideally it's fairly clear that you are accepting it for the purposes of the grant, not for implementation.
So if we accept this draft, I mean, if we accept this resolution, we don't have this coming back, that's right, we're done?
No, you're done.
And there's no other action that needs to be taken?
No.
All right. So as far as, so is that one motion, and the UGB thing, we need to, I don't agree how to proceed with that by any means, so we're not tied to that also, is that correct?
You're not tied to that, no.
So how do you want to proceed?
I would just step in here and add, we did not assign a number to this resolution, if you so choose to move forward with that, it would be 23-03.
20-0-3? Okay, how's everyone feel about it, accepting the resolution?
I know that we accept the report, accept that the public hearing has been completed for the purposes of fulfilling the requirements of the grant.
Okay, man, moving second to accept the report, because we'll live without the resolution on it.
Yeah.
Pardon?
I didn't say anything on the resolution part, I was just making sure, okay.
Okay, so you're just going to accept the report, we're not going to, your motion doesn't move except from the resolution, right?
No.
Right, does everyone understand it?
So Carolyn, this will meet, this will provide you what you need?
Well, I'd like to go back to the grant agreement, because I believe in that, the resolutions.
My understanding, Carolyn, I'm understanding, I'm not going to interrupt, but I think Roger stated that he met with DLCD and this meets requirement.
Jake's still up there. Well, we have received an interpretation from Sean Edging, which specifically says, and I'll quote in other words, "There is no obligation to adopt these items as part of the grant agreement, provided you submit the draft HNA and preliminary UGB analysis. When they are complete, that shall be fully sufficient for the grant agreement." I don't believe it matters whether you do it by resolution, or you do it by vote, because the minutes will show your vote.
Okay.
If you can go that direction, I would request that the minutes be very specific to your motion. And I think that would be very important.
Okay, so we have a motion in second for us. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing that, it passes. Carolyn, thank you. Jacob, thank you. I also wanted to thank Al Johnson, Bill Riley, and Chris Soschi for all participating in this. There were a lot of time and effort by everybody, probably not any more than Elcom. And thank you for taking those comments and interpreting them and putting in the draft plan and that. Okay, now we can move on for, so the UGB, the planning commission made sure, I watched the planning commission meeting, they were emphatic that we move forward the urban growth boundary analysis, urban growth boundary item as soon as possible. They want us to try to get this complete in a year. I don't know if that's even possible, because there's a lot of things that need to happen. But I would like to put that on notice that we move forward. I think it's also in our goals. And so I, I mean, from what my understanding, I need meeting with Chelsea. Jim Hawsey also met with Chelsea, not Chelsea, Jill, excuse me. And since we got Chelsea on board, I would advocate that she meet with Jill and take, find out the necessary steps to move forward as they see it, and see if we can get this thing going. Did everyone agree? Lucinda? Sarah? All right, thank you. Okay, consideration of approval to underbuild server upgrade, and that is Nicole.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. I appreciate the inconvenience that I could participate in those two, the last two motions that we had. I'm going to have to excuse myself. I'm going to conference, and so I just wanted to thank everyone.
Thank you for participating, Lucinda. Have a good conference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Nicole?
Yes, thank you. The city of Cusay has a broken schedule for replacement of technology equipment, which can include things such as workstations, servers, wireless networks, firewalls, switches, things like that. These servers are not necessarily up for upgrade yet. However, we've implemented several projects which have put a lot of draw on those servers. One of those is pretty significant. It's the body camera vehicle system we have at the police department that data gathering is being uploaded to the servers, continues to be uploaded to the servers on a regular and ongoing basis. And we have had some challenges with that over the last several months. One way to overcome that is to look at the server's capacity and processing. And in doing so, we determine that those need to be replaced in order to accommodate handling that video footage on a regular basis. The cost for this project is large enough that it requires us to go through a certain process. And one of the first steps that we can kind of do in that process is look to see if there are other agencies that are sitting out available, have agreements that are sitting out there available for others to kind of attach to. And a location we can do that is Oregon Vies. It's a procurement site for the state. And there was an agreement out there with an education district. I was able to get a quote under that agreement. The quote that we received from our consultant and under that agreement is both from Dell. They were able to look, Dell did those quotes. And our consultant's agreement came just barely under $700. So we're able to walk the path of recommending without going through a full request for proposal. So what you have before you is the request. This would include five servers, which will allow us to segregate and handle the video footage in a much more efficient manner. That will also free up that network efficiency for the rest of staff. We are all going to save some lags and downtime. So we are asking for approval of the hardware and the labor associated to this project to completion, not to exceed $158,474.
Comments or questions?
Just to clarify for the public purposes, we've had body cameras and dash cams for a long time. We're just upgrading the system for the efficiency of staff, correct?
Correct.
So this is installation of the servers. This is total?
This would be five new servers. We will segregate out the police videos, so that will kind of help with the latency of the actual whole network. And also, we need to see just requirements. There's a lot that goes to operating in their environment.
Any other questions? The servers that are being replaced or cannot be utilized elsewhere?
So you probably know, but maybe not everyone out there knows. We do have an emergency kind of backup plan that we can stand up the center. And we are looking at, can we repurpose those to be, sorry, as a backup and are part of that emergency center. So, you know, we're hopeful that we can do what we look at.
So you won't know if you get this installed, and you'll see if it goes over?
I think we probably know it will be four, but yeah. Our focus would be getting the new servers up and running.
Okay. Comments? Anyone else? Questions? How do you like the proceed, council?
I move we approve the server upgrade project, including, excuse me, the purchase of hardware and associated costs not to exceed $158,474.
Second? Then move in second to approve the server upgrade project. Any other comments? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes. Approval of 2020, 2025 council goals, Brett?
Yes, earlier this year, the council met in a work session specifically to discuss and deliberate on goals for the next two-year period. What you have for you is a summary and listing of those goals and some tasks that go along with them. It's important for your consideration of adoption.
So for everyone's understanding, we have a goal-setting session. We do this every two years. We have some existing goals and then some new goals that we've incorporated into this that the staff has put together. I think they've done a pretty good job. That doesn't mean this is set in stone by any means. It can come, it'll be changing, because this council has a tendency to keep adding things on. And so, but it gives us a, you know, a synopsis. It kind of gives us a guideline of where we're at and where we're going. And so I believe that enjoyed this being done in the past and look forward to this being done now. So anyone? Any other comments? Anyone? You want to accept them as presented?
I make the motion to approve the 2023, 2025 council goal.
Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the 2023 and 2025 council goals. Any other comments? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing that, it passes. Okay, we'll get back on track now. Presentations, Markfield High School update by Harper Thompson. I'll be here this evening, so we'll do a semi-annual presentation with Cusay Downtown Association.
Hi, it's good to meet. My name is Holly Gorman, and I am the executive director of the Cusay Downtown Association. And I'm so honored to be here tonight to talk to you about our semi-annual report to the city of Cusay. I'd like to welcome, of course, the city of Cusay, our citizens, coworkers, friends, and family, downtown, Front Street, and Cusay Village supporters. The mission of the Cusay Downtown Association is to foster the development of downtown Cusay by strengthening local business, encouraging business, and connecting the community with partnerships. The Cusay Downtown Association is committed to promoting the Cusay area as an attractive place to live, work, and visit by continually enhancing the quality of life of the downtown area. Our vision is to advocate for and support local businesses to thrive by being a vibrant downtown that promotes healthy living and provides opportunities for our community and guests to shop, eat, mingle, and explore. This evening, I will be going over our four committees, organization design, economic vitality, and promotions. I will be introducing you to our board members and going over a few of our accomplishments. Let's see if maybe we can just get someone to click next on it next slide. First, we have board member Beth Clarkson with Checka Berry's Flowers and Gifts. Beth is our current president. She's also the chair of the organization committee, and she does also help out on the design and promotion committee. In addition to all of that, she is the editor of our newsletter. And Checka Berry's Flowers and Gifts donated a computer to the farmer's market. I couldn't do my job without Beth. The Cusay Downtown Association has been run with her help for over 21 years, and we greatly appreciate all that she does for us. The farmer's market is in its 22nd season. It ran from May 4th through October 26th. We did have returning market manager Melissa Hassard, who will be back this year as well. She was instrumental in getting grants and sponsorships and starting new healthy cooking programs for the farmer's market this season. We did open on time, and we ran the whole season. We did have this mat match, so if you have food stamps, you can come to the market and take whatever amount you'd like off of your food stamp card, just like if you're at the grocery store. But we did have a program called Double Up Food Bucks, which would match up to the first $20 and free fruits and vegetables for people that have food stamps. In addition, we wrote another grant, and it was actually called the CBDA Basic Staple Match. And we matched an additional $10 for staples such as nuts and grapes, honey, cheese, and the like. So you could come and take $20 off your food stamp card and have $50 to spend in the market. So as you can see, this was just instrumental in helping people in our community. We also had healthy cooking coupons, and this was for anybody. You don't have to be on food stamps. Anybody in the community could come. We had chefs create recipes, and then you got a $5 off coupon for a couple of other ingredients in the recipes. So for example, one time we had a chef make peach salsa. And so on that day, you could get $5 towards either peaches or $5 towards tomatoes. So it was a really great program for everyone in the community. The CPA Food Accessibility Program, including SNAP, Double Up Food Bucks, Basic Match, and Healthy Cooking, was very successful for 2022. Between the customer distribution and the farmer redemption, we were able to help our food court community with $135,571 during the season. Our average vendor attendance is about 70 per week. We start the farmer's market the first Wednesday in May, and we go to the last Wednesday in October. So in May, we start off around 60, 65 vendors. During our peak season, we have about 90 vendors. And then towards the end of October, it does start to taper off a little bit. So even though we're in a smaller community, we're actually one of the largest farmer's markets in the state of Oregon. And this year, we were very blessed to be sponsored by many different businesses. Junior Atro Trucking Bank, Jenny Shoes, Lady Farms, Bigfoot Beverages, Southwest Family Dentistry, Cusay Food Co., Org. Health Insurance Marketplace, Crystal Tie-Dye, ELM Works Realty, Zipley Fiber, Wildfire Public House, New Horizons, Michael's Media, US Bank, and Zoko's Coffee House. And also, I would like to thank the city for cleaning the streets, turning on the power in the morning, and then helping with picking up the garbage for the day. These are just some of the kind of fun pictures of the market, all the beautiful fresh produce and flowers. And then there's jewelry artisans and soaps and candles. If you haven't met, I encourage you to come. It's really fun. And then we have board member Dana Weber, who's with Banner Bank. Dana is also on the organization committee. Banner Bank has been a longstanding sponsor of our Santa event. In addition to sponsoring the Santa event, they did also provide all of the free cookies for Santa event. Dana and the organizations committee were responsible during COVID to come up with a program called the Dues Free Match Program. And during this time, we helped struggling businesses pay for half of their membership dues so they could continue to be a member of the CBA. So this program paid for 50% of the bronze and silver membership levels. And Banner Bank is also the sponsor of our new website for $3,200. The organization committee is working hard on a new comprehensive volunteer program. Last year, we had a total of 85 members. We are also working on a new website with KDOC. We received a full sponsorship of the website from Banner Bank in the amount of $3,200. We rolled over the Coquill Tribal and Community Funds Grant for the hand washing stations for the farmer's market in the amount of $1,300. We applied for and received the Coquill Tribal Community Fund Grant for the Double Up Food Bucks Program for $3,500. We applied for and received the Three Rivers Casino Grant for the Food Accessibility Program in the amount of $11,000. That was one of the programs I was telling you that helped with the CBA Staple Match and the Healthy Cooking coupons as well. We applied for and received the federal U.S. Day Farmer's Market Grant in the amount of $20,000. We applied for and received the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Revitalization Grant for 161 Day Avenue on behalf of Heidi Sauce to revitalize the building in the Front Street District for $200,000. The organization committee is currently working on the new logo and is also responsible for putting on the annual membership meeting. So the Cusay Downtown Association applied with the help of Heidi Sauce to get this revitalization grant for 161 Day Avenue, which is in Front Street. It was a $200,000 grant, and this will go to revitalize the building according to the Secretary of Interior Standards of Historic Restoration. It is in full swing, and we are working away on progress reports and the reimbursement request, and it's going great. There will be four commercial units and two residential units. So it's just, as you know, we need to bring housing to the area and to have two new residential units in the Front Street District is just great. Heidi has a lot of experience in this work. And as you can see, the building in the center, that's 999 North Front Street. She revitalized that property, and it's actually the Oregon Main Street winner of the Excellence on Made Award for Adaptive reuse. Then we have board member Julie Graham with Michael's Media. She's the co-chair of the promotions committee. And every year, she is down there at Shop Small Saturday at Jenny Shoes, hosting our Shop Small Commemorative Mug Exchange. She is working on the Blackberry Arts Festival and the Bay Area Fun Festival and all of our promotions year round. The promotions committee puts on great events year round. We have approximately 1,000 to 1,200 kids trick-or-treating with their families in downtown Front Street and Cusay Village. The community was glad to have our festivals back in person, and they were a huge success with great attendance. We helped the Blackberry Arts Festival and the Bay Area Fun Festival. Holiday open houses and Shop Small Saturday were a great way to pick off the holiday shopping tradition and our footprint. Santa Comes to Town was great to have back in person, along with the tree lighting and the showing of the movie Elf with the Softball Fight. So if you don't know, during the Softball Fight, we ask people to bring in new rolled-up pairs of socks. And during the Snowball Fight, they can have a Softball Fight. And then all of the socks are collected and donated to local homeless shelters. And the reindeer roundup was a ton of fun and got a lot of new people into our businesses and stores. We have board member Steve Schneider, co-chair of the promotions committee and vice president, with you all. Here's just some fun photos of one of the children sitting down with Santa, getting in his wish list. Some kids that actually won the, one of the weekly reindeer roundup prizes. Santa at the Egyptian, the free cookies and cider at the visitor's center, and then the tree lighting. Then we have board member Doug Wolsey, who's the chair of the design committee. He hangs the seasonal banners. He's with Les Schwab. And the design committee displays and hung the seasonal banners. We have the beautiful flower baskets that arrived and made to highlight downtown. If you didn't know, the bike rack project was completed last year. The CPA purchased the design from an artist in Tennessee, Duncan McDaniel. We received three grants, $5,000 from the Ford Family Foundation, $2,500 from Jordan Phillips, and $2,000 from... $2,500 from Jordan Phillips, and $2,000 from the Hoover Reclamation. The CPA also funded this project. Marshall High School manufactured the racks, and the city installed them. The Design Committee was also very busy. It was a new project. It was the Utility Art Box Project. We had three phases with multiple boxes at each location. There were 15 locations. Sherwin-Williams graciously donated all of the paint and all of the painting supplies for Phase 1 and Phase 2, so it was a tremendous help. Pacific Power sponsored Phase 1 and Phase 2, and Facial Paints donated the remaining gallons of paint for Phase 3. The CBDA contributed to this project as well, and all sources combined totaled $7,300. They were all ocean themes with similar color palettes. And another great thing about this project was it was all local talent, so all of these artists were local. Thank you to the wonderful artists Emma Meyer, Kaylin Bennett, Chance Arms, Kel Smith, Megan Gray, Mariah Smith, Alice Keating, Lauren Wel, Monica DePridge, Bailey Mann, and Sharon Van Tassel. And then a big thank you to Josie Keating with Josie's Art Lab for all of her work on this project. We knew we wanted to do this project, but we wanted some expertise from an artist, so we brought Josie in, and she was just able to help us out tremendously with the call to artists and what kind of paint we needed, how to get the paint supplies to the artists, and how to work a big, major art project like this. We thank her. She did an amazing job, which we kind of stole, or now she's on the Design Committee. And then I give my best wishes to the Community Coalition of Empire. They are going to be doing a very similar project that is going to be based off of what we did. And so we're helping them to help their call to artists, and we're trying to get people interested in doing this project in Empire. So we can't wait to see all the beautiful artwork that is going to be done. There are just a few more of the amazing outcomes of the Utility Art Box Project. Then we have Board Member Jill Rasmussen with the Egyptian Theater. She's on the Economic Vitality Committee and the Treasurer. We just held our annual membership meeting on January 19, 2023. We had speakers Mayor Jopinetti on recent achievements and new developments happening in Coos Bay. Heidi Sauce spoke on Front Street Revitalization. I spoke on the CPA's Committee of Review, Introduction of Board Members and Accomplishments. And Beth Clarkson, our president, spoke on the CPA on participating and volunteering in the CPA. We held our annual elections, and four board members were re-elected: Dana Weber, Julie Graham, Kate Granato, and your very own Stephanie Kilmer. We did give out our annual awards, and Years of Service was won by Beth Clarkson, and this was, she finally got it. She would never let us give it to her. And she finally, after 21 years, it took 21 years for her to get the Years of Service Award. She is just amazing, and she's always there to help out every single day in all sorts of different ways, and we really couldn't do it without her. And then we had volunteer appeal, which was Josie Keating, for all of her help on the Utility Art Box Project. And the partnership award went to Sherwin-Williams for all of their help and all of their knowledge in donating all of the PMPA supplies for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Utility Art Box Project. Here's our winners, Beth, Josie, and Sherwin-Williams, at the annual membership meeting. And then we have Board Member Stephanie Kilmer, who's our City Liaison. She's with Southwest Oregon Regional Airport, and she's the Chair of the Economic Vitality Committee. And we also have to thank Stephanie in kind of getting our ducks in a row and helping us work on our new logo. So we're in the process of it. We're in the home stretch of that. And then Economic Vitality. We are working on implementing the Travel Oregon REI Economic Vitality Plan for downtown Coos Bay that was completed in 2020 from the Travel Oregon Grant. And we are also working on implementing the CPA's strategic plan. Then we have Board Member Kate Granato with South Coast Family Dynasty. She is the co-chair of the Promotions Committee. She was in charge of the theme and decorating the trailer for the Drive by Santa in 2021. She also came up with the Rave Year Roundup idea. They are a Santa sponsor, and Kate works with the Promotions Committee to run the Blackberry Arts Festival and the Bay Area Fun Festival and all of our events year-round. And then we have Board Member Jim Marra, with Coos Head Food Co-op. He's on the Organization Committee, and they were also sponsors of the Coos Bay Farm Market. And he, in conjunction with Stephanie, is also helping us get on track to get the logo done. So between the two of them, we're going to have the logo. And then Oregon--
When do you think that's going to go before the port?
Next Monday. It's all ready. Yep, I think that's the final stage. Yeah. And then we have the Oregon Main Street Impact Study come out. And so for volunteers, the total network contribution was 6,920 hours. The average community contribution is 230 hours, and we are right in there. The value contributed back to Oregon communities: $205,884. Statewide, 166 drops were created. Statewide community investments: building upgrades: $1,411,350-plus; public improvements: $3,459,500-plus; and housing units: more than 13. And next, we have Board Member Jay Andrews with Bigfoot Beverages. He is on the Promotions Committee. He is a sponsor of the Coos Bay Farmer's Market, and he helped create our wonderful farmer's market signs and posters. And we have Board Member Madge Osborne with Pacific Pregnancy Clinic. She's on the Organization Committee, and she's our secretary. And I'm so grateful that she takes our minutes for us. She does a wonderful job. And with the support of the city, local business owners, community members, and volunteers, we are making a difference in downtown Coos Bay. Thank you.
Questions or comments for Holly?
Holly, can you talk a little bit about the collaboration that you've done with North Bend's Main Street program?
Yeah, so, you know, we are a part of Oregon Main Street, which is all the Main Street communities in Oregon, and all of us are here to help each other. There's not any competition. And every Main Street, whenever anyone has a project, the first thing we do is say, hey, does anyone know how to do this? Have you done this before? Can you help us with this? So when I created the volunteer handbook and guidelines and all those things, they're like, no one else has it. Can we have it? I'm like, yes, you can have it. All you can do is change your information. And so we do this. We help each other. And so, yeah, Stephanie's just been so great to work with. We were up at Oregon Main Street Network Conference together, and we went and attended a bunch of different things together and had a really good time. And we're constantly going back and forth with what each of us are doing, and we just have a really great relationship. And I'm so happy to have her be a part of Oregon Main Street.
And didn't you do a program with her that was a business help
Yes.
in the last six months?
Yeah. Yeah, we've done a couple through the Chamber. They're business events, and so they've asked us to talk on certain different topics. One of them was holiday preparation, how to get businesses ready for the holidays, and how to get businesses in people's doors, and using social media and other avenues as well. So we've been presenters a couple different times together, kind of collaborating together on those projects.
And then just one more on your Dues Relief Program. How has that translated to member retention? I mean, are your numbers growing?
We kept all of our numbers, which was unheard of during COVID. Most places completely shut down, didn't have any membership renewals. And so that program kept our members at the level that we had them at. So that was, that program literally kept us going with our members.
And are they still members today?
Yes.
So I was fortunate enough to be at, well, this is the Main Street group that was down here that oversaw Heidi's project.
Oh, that was the statewide restoration-type group, yes. There was about nine of them. It was a really, it was a really long wait, but they're all from different aspects of restoration for Oregon.
Which oversaw this project and the grant, if I understand correctly. Anyway, they were very impressed with what was going on, and Holly did a great explanation of what was going on and how things had been and how it frustrated moving on. And during the Downtown Association meeting also where Heidi spoke, I think it was important to let you know that she told any business there that she'd be glad to work with any one of them to help with the grant. So Heidi seemed to have an act of getting this done, and she was going to give her expertise to help, and she also volunteered Holly, which she said she'd be glad to do.
Absolutely.
It was nice to see that. Any comments, anyone? So this is a semi-annual report they do. We have a three-year agreement with them, and so, and we'll see them in six months. Unless you have a question for Roger.
Well, I was just going to share that one of your now adopted goals--
Correct.
--was to evaluate different weight-bearing sign options. And I would suggest maybe the council approve a weight-bearing committee to evaluate that. I have discussed that option on the new mayor. But Councilors Kilmer, Stevens, and Genobo would like to serve on that committee. And then, along with two staff members, Chelsea Ashen and Bo Rutherford. And then Holly has also indicated that Beth Clarkson, Dees Meyer, and herself would also serve on behalf of the Downtown Association.
All right. I'm glad to step forward to do that, and it is one of our goals, and we've discussed it many times. So we have new weight-bearing signs in what, a couple months? All right? So--
I have the logo. We've been working on that logo for what, 10 years?
So another one of our councils is partnering with Coos Bay Downtown Association for their 150th birthday. Does that cut them away to that?
We're starting discussions, yeah.
And I think that'll be another committee that will come back shortly to put together. I think your council rules of state that committees need to be formed at the very least to provide a motion and approval of the council.
So can I have a motion to approve Roger's recommendation, please? So--
Second.
To move in second, to approve the committee that Roger has stated. Any other questions or discussions? Karen, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed and passes. Thank you, everyone, for stepping up and being willing to do that. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is presentation, semi-annual presentation by the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. How are you?
Wonderful. How are you?
Good.
Thank you so much for rearranging. I do not learn the time change, and I apologize for--
No, it worked out well because we arranged it to-- So it all worked out very good.
I appreciate it. I am Stacy Dewaner. I am this year's president of the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. We were founded in 1980 as a merger of the Coos Bay and North Bend Chambers. With over 530 members, the Chamber's strength lies in the number and diversity of its membership. The activities of the Chamber vary in response to the needs of the businesses and the community. Much of our work is accomplished through the volunteer time and efforts of its members, primarily through committees providing community leadership in the areas of the economic development, government affairs, leadership development, workforce and education, ambassadors, natural resources, transportation, and many more items. I'm going to go through and just kind of highlight what we've been working on and things that are to come. In general operations, we had a mix of supporting our existing programs and running with many new services offered to our businesses. Things like the business filters that you were talking about with Holly, where she came and presented. Those were short sessions intended to offer our membership information on current subjects and bring them to their business operations. That one place that began on September 6th. We have introduced a tiered sponsorship program to our members so that they're able to budget their support for Chamber activities. The social gathering is a new activity that we have also introduced. It is just a time where a local business is able to showcase where they're at, and we have open communication for our membership. And so we just say, come and have a conversation with someone and spark a new idea. And so there's no program. There's just an opportunity to get together with like-minded people. The Chamber Minute Program continues with By Coastal Media and the newspaper, using 26 articles during this period. In events, we had our 30th Economic Album Forum on December 9. Our focus this year was the transition of where we as a community have been and where we are supposed to become. Mayor Benetti came and set the perfect tone relating his experience as businessman here for 40 years, or more than 40 years, what he had seen and where he sees it going to today. Other participants filled the picture with our tomorrow. John Mitchell gave his 30th excellent presentation and, as always, concluded the poem. The face-to-face was well-attended. We had our 2023 Community Awards banquet on the 28th of January. We returned to the last Saturday of January again for our banquet. There was energetic entertainment from LTOB's Matilda cast, and if you missed it, you missed something really great, and hopefully you've seen or are seeing Matilda. Our in-person event had over 200 people in participation, honoring the Citizen of the Year, Pam Plummer, Business of the Year, South Coast Family Dynasty, with over 21 votes. They did a special job. And the Chamber Member of the Year, Steve Nye, together with the President's Award for Tim Slater, the Community Award for Frontline Educators, our teachers, and recognizing the current and past year's Chamber Award. It was a wonderful night of celebration and enjoying each other's company. I had a good time. I only lost my shirt one time coming into the studio.
Nobody knows.
Our Wednesday Business Connection season for 2022-2023 opened with Senator Dick Anderson sharing his outlook for the upcoming election and 2023 legislative session. That was followed with a series of candidate forums for county sheriff, county commissioner in position three, state representative districts 1 and 9, and the Coos County jail funding letting. The year ended with a review of both the elections process in Coos County, which was super exciting. The superintendents for both Coos Bay and North Bend schools and development plans for the Court's Terminal 1 project. WBC is a great program finally being reestablished to an in-person mode. If any of you have a subject or issue that you'd like to hear more about at WBC, we're always open for your phone call.
Sorry.
Leadership Coos for 2022-2023 season kicked off its full blast on September 15. The program runs from September through May and guarantees that whether you have lived here your whole life or just moved here, you'll find places, people, services that you had never known anything about. It has been a wonderful way to find out about our community. In transportation, Ron Koosh is the Chair of the Committee. He puts together a program of featured speakers and field trips to give the members the best insights to transportation issues, solutions, and other opportunities. In our Legislative Action Team, they were actively working and involved in each of the WBC candidate forums. They created a lot of the questions and, in multiple cases, being the emcee for the forums themselves. During August, they were part of the candidate endorsement interviews. And prior to the elections, the LAT team worked with the Oregon State Chamber of Commerce Political Action Committee to defend small business. As we look into the 2023 legislative session, LAT will be regularly involved with representative video conferences done jointly with the college, working issues through the Oregon State Chamber of Commerce and direct contacts with our legislators. Beyond the legislator, your LAT is actively participating in many other local issues that make a difference for all of us. Our ambassadors enjoy a growth of membership with a focus on ribbon cutting, business after-hours hosting, and active support of the WBC programs in promoting Chamber fellowship. They are also looking at growing role in membership and support, and there is a spot for everyone on that active team. It's my favorite place I live to go out and celebrate the new businesses or businesses that have reached a milestone. That's my favorite thing, is to walk in with a red coat and really cheer on our businesses that are having successes. In marketing and communications, we were focused on using a variety of communication methods with the membership and the community. They are also developing marketing tools to promote and grow the organization. A tremendous amount of energy is being used by our Chamber Board to provide more value to members and engage them in making a difference for business and community. They also look to increase production of videos for training and promotion of individual businesses. They are looking into the bylaws with a serious review of the Chamber's structure for effectiveness and impact. Additionally, our website is being upgraded to ensure its value and information as a source and tool to enhance business and community. These are certainly exciting times. Rick Osborne's theme for the Chamber in 2022 was a rising tide lifts all boats. In 2023, my theme is together create opportunity.
Great theme. Comments and questions for Stacy? You didn't solicit anybody for Dancing with Stars.
That's because I'm here to be Chamber Ball.
Oh, I know. I lose track. I don't know what they had to order. I appreciate the partnership, the work relationship we have and the asset you are to this community. Tim, congratulations on your work. Well deserved. And so, anyone else? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I think we made it through the agenda. All right, city manager's report.
I get to take that.
Oh, very good.
Yeah.
Good thing I was looking your way.
It's very good. It looks like it was planned, doesn't it?
It was.
So I'll start out with giving you a reminder, I think Christine sent an email today, the LOC Spring Conference is coming up and we'd be happy to make those arrangements for you. The earlier the better, so we can get you a hotel room, space that we'd love to get you at. But if anyone is interested, you can check in with Christine or myself.
Yeah, we just got an email today, so probably didn't get back. Because she suggested, Christine mentioned that she tried to make reservations at where the convention is in Seaside, so, which would be very nice for everyone, so.
Yeah, so I think you can either reply to the email or the call, however you'd like to do it.
Okay.
I'm just gonna give a, hopefully, kind of brief update on the coordinated homeless pilots that we have with the county, husband, and Coos Bay. So under that project, we have some kind of last items that need to be met. The advisory board, which we all remember, there's two members looking to visit, these that were appointed to the advisory board. That one had contracted with Zinsity, which is a marketing, surveying, kind of data gathering company, and also rural development initiatives. Zinsity has helped to put together a survey that we're gonna push out to the community. I put a flyer there on your guys' desks. It gives an online survey option. We also have some paper surveys that we pass out very swiftly throughout the community so we can respond to. Zinsity will gather that data and give it to us in a meaningful format so that we can use that to kind of inform the next upcoming steps. Our DIA is coming to us, I think we have a friend there, her boss used to be here.
Yeah, she's right here.
Yeah, yeah. So she's part of that company and they're kind of helping formulate our stakeholder conversations to those members of our community who are providing services related to homelessness. And they will also be helping to organize a couple of town hall meetings. One will take place at North Bend and one in Kokil. So maybe we'll, we will use the information that Zinsity's gathering, what RDI is gathering from these meetings and conversations. And now we'll kind of see what we put together for our, the bones of the five-year strategic plan. That plan needs to come back before each of the entities for your approval. That kind of guides what we do next steps with the grant holders. The meetings, town hall meetings are scheduled for March 6th and 7th. The 6th will be a Kokil Community Center and the 7th at North Bend Community Center. The timing is from 11:00 to 1:30. We'll have some additional information about, hoping to know about that. Another milestone is a hiring of a director of the coordinated office. It's gonna be kind of the person who keeps all of the pieces moving with all of the different entities in the community working together for this focused goal. That position has been listed through Cardinal Services, hoping to get some good options there and get somebody on staff. They will be really helpful during this period where we're creating a strategic plan. And then I think the last thing I would just say is the goal is to get that strategic plan developed and ready for presentation in late April. We need to have it ready for our first reporting to the state in May. So moving away from that topic, we underwent a telephone system transfer today with just a few little bumps in the road. We worried going back in today to get something to a better place. Obviously, focus being on the dispatch center, 911 lines were operational, operational at full time, but we did have some bumps as far as being able to transfer phone calls around. So we're working on it. We do need to get some information out to the public now that we have the extension call site. We'll get that up and on the web and things like that. And then last, we had a meeting that was good sound and good video. We still have some video work. We have some questions asked from people. How can we make the space more visible to the people who are sitting remotely? So we're still working on that. Obviously, microphones are still awaiting arrival, I'm sure they will be the most still. Yesterday, we did get the hearing device, so we're happy to provide those if there are people that need to be in the space with some extra hearing assistance, so. Thank you.
So how about the volume for the speakers you have online? Karen, then?
So today is actually the first, we've had several meetings since the new system has been set up for the audio. This is the first meeting you could actually hear them speaking. So the volume is not quite right.
Right.
I did send a message on that, but at least we heard them.
Okay.
We had the LOC regional meeting here this last week and then also the Parks Commission meeting. And we struggled with both of those, getting their sound to come through the system if they were sitting remotely, so. Progress, it's been slow, but we're getting there.
Okay. Any questions, Nicole? All right, thank you. Council comments? Sarah, I'll start with you. Anything this evening?
The online experience was great. Thank you, Nicole, for your work towards that. No other comments for me tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah.
True. Just a reminder, we're going, we're in the legislative session and to watch the bills going through. Our discussion about the housing needs analysis earlier during the Chamber of Commerce event, DLCD was there and talked about House Bill 2889. That would override our ability to argue with the housing needs analysis. The state will create a model and appeal will not be an option. So good that we're doing this while we are. They said as much from the stage when I asked them, that was the intent. Not vague, really, but.
Yeah.
Fun stuff. And yeah, Senator Anderson for our area, not sure he recognized that part that he is one of the sponsors. So if he had a chance to talk to me about it, might be one to talk about. That's it.
Rob?
The Coos Bay Library Board met last week and since the board chairs in our audience tonight, I figure I better do some library statistics. For the month of January, the library got 8,147 total monthly visits and 19,700 items were checked out. Of those, only 633 were digital downloads. And they also had 9,311 wireless connections. They put on 40 programs with program attendance of 975. And I don't know if people are aware, but they have a community fridge mount where library patrons can come in and get free fruits and vegetables. And for the month of January, that served 1,040 people and 307 households. So the library continues to be a vital program in our area. And then secondly, as Holly mentioned in her presentation, the Community Coalition of Empire has opened up the call to artists for the Empire Utility Box Projects. The theme is historic empire with a focus on the waters. And artists are encouraged to use the completed Empire real for their inspiration or just come up with their own inspiration. If artists want to submit for that project, they can either mail it to cce@fieldbox3452coosbay or email it to moss_jolan@theoath.com or they can drop it off at Star Hope Activity Center in 657 B Martin Coos Bay. And the submission deadline for phase one is March 17th. So I don't.
Same batteries, Dave. Stephanie?
I don't have really too much. I just wanted to thank our presenters for bearing with us as we moved stuff around on the agenda. I appreciate Holly and Stacy coming in to give reports on their organizations. I think that's improved, not only so that we get an update, but also for the community to know what's going on. So I appreciate you taking that. And also to see Beth here, appreciate your comments as well. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks. So I just, the road that we were talking about earlier, you know, it's sad that businesses that suffered like they did. It's unfortunate, but you know, it's something that happens. I noticed it, I mean, there were a lot that were impacted. So thank you for your patience. I know that isn't helpful a lot when you lose business, but thanks for understanding. You don't realize it till you come back. I was out of town, I drove back and all of a sudden going down the road again, I thought, oh, this is wonderful, right? Because trying to get around the other way was very difficult for all. And I think it was first year, I think it wasn't one-on-one, two-way on one road. And yeah, that was interesting. I don't think that would work by any means today. Anyway, I also want to take the time to thank Dr. Sharp for serving 16 years as a water board member. It's much appreciated. Volunteerism helps us operate for the city in all kinds of ways. Chamber and Downtown Association knows that. And also I want to thank Nicole in advance for participating tomorrow in the Battle of the Books. It's stepping in my place. It'll be fun and you'll enjoy it, I'm sure. Anyway, that's the end for our agenda this evening. We will have an urban renewal agency meeting with the Coos County, uh, no, the Coos County. The Coos Bay City Council meeting is at the end and I'll go ahead and adjourn it. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Coos Bay Urban Renewal Agency to order. And our first item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody that would like to make a public comment? All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is our consent calendar. And how does the agency wish to proceed?
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is consideration to award the contract to David Evans and Associates for the Empire Area Blueprint. Is that the opening?
Yes. A committee comprised of staff, Mayor Benetti, Councilor DeNovo, and Councilor Stevens was tasked with developing and request for qualifications for the purpose of refunding two previously prepared plans. So those plans are the Coos Bay Empire Urban Renewal Plan and the Holliday Place Master Plan. So this project requirement will be known as the Empire Area Blueprint. We'll just call it Blueprint from now on. And we'll focus on strategies to implement suggestive improvements in the Empire area within the study sessions. This can include access, completion, connectivity, safety, parking, and weight binding. The Blueprint also considers the need for new policies, code amendments, and funding tools necessary to fulfill the urban renewal agency goals and agendas. So the RFQ was advertised on January 23rd and the deadline for qualified consultants to submit a statement of qualifications goes February 8th. The advertising period is short and however, the committee felt it was important to select a qualified consultant, negotiate a civil work, and commence with these efforts in a timely fashion. The city received one submitted. Why would it be desirable to receive more in this bidding climate is not uncommon. This is in part due to large volume of work with consultants and contractors who are experienced. This is due to just the large volume of work out there. Consultants are busy and it's hard to find qualified staff. So however, SOQ did receive one, that was from David Evans and Associates, who the city has had success with in the past, and they were responsible for the Front Street Blueprint efforts. The committee reviewed DEA's SOQ and determined it met all the requirements. Because of the familiarity with DEA and DEA's past success on city projects, the committee waived the interview process. By waiving the process and should the agency approve the award to DEA, it will allow the project to commence sooner than originally scheduled. A budget of $200,000, which includes a $40,000 contingency, has been reserved from agency funds. Should the agency agree with the committee's recommendation, staff will award with DEA to develop a scope and fee. So it's anticipated that the blueprint efforts will take 12 months to complete. So the funds for this project will come from the Empire Capital Funds Fund to DEA specifically to the crash hole in Iowa. So this is the agency awarding the Empire Area Blueprint project to David Evans and Associates for an amount not to exceed $200,000, which includes a $40,000 contingency.
All right. Anything, Sarah, that you have to add, or Mayor Benetti, or Councilor Stevens?
Well, as it was mentioned, we, our group, Front Street, at least myself and Lucian, and Sarah is new to it with them, but I think I made a good presentation. And of course, the main thing is, you know, this is just kind of a suggestion, but interacting, which is important with the residents out there, the businesses, I think, key. They've referenced that a couple of times, so I think that's really important. And that'll kind of dictate where this goes.
It was a nice presentation on paper. Any questions? How would you like to proceed?
Jen, you have a comment?
No, no, it's time to thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the Empire Area Blueprint project to David Evans and Associates for an amount not to exceed $200,000, which includes a $40,000 contingency.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Empire Area Blueprint project to David Evans and Associates. Any discussion, or, yeah, any discussion? Robert's doing it.
I just want to say I'm super excited that this is finally moving forward. I mean, it's been on my radar ever since I became a councillor, so I'm happy to see us moving forward with some kind of Empire area.
I agree.
And I think the main thing again is to make sure that we get this publicized so that there's interaction with everyone out there. I mean, that's the key. We had a good result with the downtown, I mean, the Front Street group. And I'm sure that we'll get the same interaction there, too.
And we'll, our folks that are represented on the Community Coalition of Empire will also make sure that they're up to date, keep them up to date on that as well. All right, any further comment or any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. And that is the only action item that we have for the Urban Renewal Agency. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Cool.